that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated. that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to
(Music)
the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting that the show get on the road. Council members in the building, if they please report to the council papers in order that we may proceed. It would be appreciated.
(Music)
It is ten minutes after ten. There are five council members present. Mr. Wax is requesting Seeing none, Madam Clerk, open the roll on item number 9 and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Next.
Item number 10 is a public hearing item. There's a card from the public on the item also.
Let us call that item special.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 12 through 19.
Colleagues, we have items number 12 through 19 before us. 17 special, 19 special. 19 was continued until?
March 2nd.
March 2nd. 17 is called special. Are there any other specials, colleagues? We do have a speaker's card, I believe, on item 12, so item 12 we will call special also. Is an ordinance? We'll withhold on that ordinance, and then we'll go ahead and continue item number 12, as it is an ordinance, a week, since we won't get 12 today. Okay? So what's the balance, Madam Clerk?
Items 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18.
Okay. Seeing no council members that wish to speak on those items, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 41, with the exception of item 40, that's already been acted on.
27 special for Mr. Burnson. Any specials, colleagues?
I'm going to call 20, I don't know that I need to call 20 special. I'm going to ask that 20 go over for a week. There's some issues that have to be resolved, whether or not it's in conflict with another planning action, so it's first reading ordinance go over next week for second reading.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? Okay, then, item 20 will be continued a week. Any other specials, colleagues?
Item 32, I was wondering, could we continue that for one week, so that I could meet with the Police Department on the report?
Is there any objection to continuing item number 32 for one week? Seeing no objection, that'll be the order.
Mr. President, item 37 special, please.
Item number 37 special. Any other specials, colleagues? Okay, these are items for which public hearings have not been held. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to be heard? Madam Clerk, why don't we articulate the numbers again?
Items 20 through 41, with the exception of 20, and 12 is called special, and 37.
Okay.
So that would be 21, 23, 24, 25, 28 through 31, 33 through 36, 38 and 39, and 41.
Seeing no persons in the audience that wish to be heard, we'll close the public hearing. Council members who have called item special have been called special. Councilwoman Misakowski, I see that your button is pushed for a reason. It is to call an item special? No? Okay. So let us open the roll on those items that the clerk just announced, save the specials, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
And the orders are all over for one week?
The ordinances will all go over one week. Mr. Burnson has withheld on all of those.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 6, called special. There's a card from the public. It's a public hearing item.
Okay, back to item number 6. We do have an individual that wants to be heard, and it's Chandran, is it? And I won't even attempt the last name. It's P.R... Is it Prakash?
Mr. President, at this time, I've spoken with the applicants and the affected property owners. I would simply move for a 30-day continuance before we make any assessments, give the, an opportunity to work with our office to figure out if we can resolve this in a more favorable manner. If not, we'll come back in 30 days and make the assessment as suggested, but we'd ask for a continuance of 30 days on this matter.
Is there any objection to continuing item number 6 for 30 days? Seeing no objection, that'll be the order. Next, Madam Clerk.
Item number 10 also has a card from the public.
Okay, item number 10. We have two cards for item number 10. We have a Bill Johnson and a Darcy Bieber. Item number 10, again, Bill Johnson, Darcy Bieber. Are they here? If you'd like to come forward, you're more than welcome to speak right here at the center Right there. That's the one.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, sir. I would assume you're Mr. Johnson.
I am Bill Johnson.
Please, sir, go right ahead.
I'm a longtime resident of Venice, as well as a very active real estate agent in that area. I will not recite to you the information that already contained in the packages that you've received. I would like to add a few comments, however. First, I would like to speak about the subject property. As a real estate agent, I listed this property two years ago, and I'm upholding the flyer that I used for that particular property. The address is 624th Avenue. And the public records show, at this point, the property is owned as a 624th Place address by Marcia Bieber. Since that time, the house has been removed. However, the aspect of this property and its relationship to the street, 24th Avenue, has not changed. There is a tendency to suggest that by changing the address to an Oceanfront Walk designation that is exempt from considerations of the avenue. I cannot provide a panoramic view of this particular property in relationship to 24th Avenue, because it is a very compacted neighborhood. The spirit and intent of the Venice Community Plan is to preserve the integrity of our changing neighborhood. Specifically for this proposal, to exempt the ordinance, to allow an extra 3 feet, my feeling is, there is no need for the extra 3 feet to be granted. If the owner of the property desires to have 31 feet interior height, that can easily be accomplished by lowering the grade of the garage level. If that is done, everyone wins. They have 31 feet of living space. The neighborhood has their view. 3 feet does not sound like much, but that 3 feet is the difference between the surrounding neighborhood having their view or not. This particular house is located in a very unique part of the city. Houses located along Speedway are, when they're opposite one another, are very often closer together than they are on actual avenue. So anything built along Oceanfront Walk very seriously impacts what is east of it. We would not even be having this conversation were it not for a flaw in the way property owners are notified of impending construction. As it is, anyone proposing construction on Oceanfront Walk, the city will notify only those people within 500-foot radius of the property, or those people abutting that particular property. In this particular case, the people who are impacted the most, the streets to the north, the streets to the south, and the surrounding neighborhood, were never informed. And there are several who are rather bitter that they were not informed. As an example of how this impacts, there's a family on 23rd Avenue who are now working with an architect to have their house torn down and rebuilt. When they understand, when they understood, rather, the impact of this construction, they're a little, they are signatures to the appeal, as are signatures on people living on the other streets.
And if you can conclude, sir?
I'm urging you, as a council, to uphold the spirit and intent of the ordinance and maintain the 28-foot of height restriction.
Thank you very much.
My name is Darcy Bieber. My mother and I are the owners of this property. We are not developers. We have lived in Venice. I've lived in Venice for five years, and I'm part of this community. Regarding the address, the 2401 and 2403 Oceanfront Walk addresses has been approved by Building and Safety. Our houses were designed in early 1999, adhering to the Venice ICO, before the specific plan was announced, which permitted a building height of 30 feet, measured from Speedway. We have Coastal Commission and Venice Community Planning Commission approval. These houses are smaller than most of the houses, a long oceanfront walk, and are beautifully designed. They'll be an asset to this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to move the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, which did grant the exception from the specific plan, based on the support and testimony from the council district, that's Council District 6, based on the fact that this was confirmed unanimously by the Venice Community Planning Advisory Committee. It's a project that had, under the earlier existing ICO in Venice, gotten an approval for this project, and gotten Coastal Commission approval. In the interim, a specific plan was adopted, and this is a technical correction, but it's one, as is indicated, this is going to be a 30-foot building, and the buildings in the nearby, a lot away vicinity, are 40 feet high, 40 feet high, 39 feet high. This is going to be 30. So it's appropriate, and the Planning and Land Use Management Committee unanimously recommended the approval of this exception.
Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
I also rise as a member of the Plum Committee who got a chance to review this, and not only that we find there was support, but there was consistency in regards to the plan itself, and the fact that the location, this building would be consistent with the buildings to its left and to its right. And basically, I don't see any reason why there shouldn't be a unanimous support.
Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? If not, Councilwoman Misakowski has moved the Plum Committee report. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith. Next item.
Mr. President, item number 27 was called special, however, Councilmember Burnson advised that his questions have been answered. Do you wish to take that one up?
Yes. Item number 27 is now before us, colleagues. Mr. Burnson had called it special, and his questions have been answered. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on item number 27? It is before us now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved. We'll send that forthwith also. Next item.
Item number 12 called special by Councilmember Wax.
Mr. Wax, item number 12, you called special?
I'd love to know what item number 12 is.
Excuse me, Mr. Wax, it was item number 17 you called special.
Okay. And item number 17 is, oh, yeah, I can't tell from what's on the agenda, though, what actually the status of this is. Is it going to happen or not? It just simply says, receive and note and file the Planning Department report, and ask them to come back to us on the status. It really doesn't tell us what's happening. Hi, again. This is something, obviously, we actually talked about yesterday at the Hill debate forum, and the proposal to put EIRs on the Internet, I think, is a really important one, and interestingly, got a very good response from the environmental community that was present at the debate yesterday. So, Ms. Luddy, maybe?
President Pro Tem Savornich, members of the council, good morning. Emily Luddy for the Planning Department. The Planning Department has been working on this project for the last five months, and I'm pleased to say that, yes, the environmental impact reports that accompany private applications to the City of Los Angeles through the Planning Department are now posted on the Planning Department website. And for your information, we have additional staff reports today, but the address is citayofla.org/planning, and then you can look under Environmental Impact Reports.
Is there a way, that's a great start, and I like that. Now, there are, in addition to EIRs for private developments, there are EIRs for others, and also for some of the proprietary departments, even though they may be the certifying, DWP certifies their own, and Harbor certifies their own, but can there be a master way to get all of them on there, irrespective of whether it's Planning or the other departments?
Councilman Wax, I'm not sure I can answer on behalf of other departments.
Could you, well, what I'd like to ask you to do as a friendly amendment here, if you could, if you could spend a little time and determine the best way to make sure that those that don't come under your jurisdiction, that we can supplement that with those that don't, so that we have all of the relevant, all of the relevant EIRs regarding city departments on the Internet, whether it's on your website or on another website, is there some way, I'd like to move that you have like 30 days, and in 30 days come back to us with some ideas as to how we might make sure that the EIRs not covered by your current plan can also get added on? So if I just would move that in...
Joel, I'd like to second that, but with a period.
Yeah, and whatever, you know, to give you some time to look at it, but if there's some things we need to do, so that we have a complete set of the, you know, that all the hours that relate to city-sponsored projects, or projects under the Aegis of various city departments, all go on the Internet. Such as, for example, an East Valley Water Reclamation Plant, or such as a development in the Harbor, the Harbor Department, or Airport, or all of them, that they all just, it's really a matter of making this information available. When the neighborhood councils get going, use of technology is going to be very important in informing people and all the communities about things that are relevant to them. So we're off to a good start, and I'm glad to hear with respect to EIRs done by private developers, the question is then, can we supplement it so that we have the complete information available to people?
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
I'm happy to second Joel's motion, except I'm not so sure that the Planning Department should report back. I think we should just amend the instruction here, that instruct Information Technology Agency with the proprietary departments, as well as the Department of Environmental Quality, to report on the Internet capability of all EIRs produced for and by the city on public projects. I did know that when we came to the Plum Committee on this one, I brought with me the, I think it's about eight CDs, CD, to go into the CD-ROM for the Internet on the LAX expansion, which is now, so LA, we know the LA International Airport is working with that technology, but just to make sure nothing else is falling through the cracks, and less than the proprietary departments, which I imagine would be, are able of doing this, I'm concerned that our own Public Works projects be, you know, through the Department of Public Works and through the Department of Environmental Quality, that we look at those interior ones. So let's just add a further instruction to all the departments to work. If they want to consult with the Planning Department about how the Planning Department has done it, NITA, I think that will cover all the bases.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
One, I also rise to commend the Department for the work they've done up to this date, and I think that when you look at projects, particularly the larger projects impacting the city, it's going to be in their best interest to basically put in our, the EIR and CD-ROM and allow for more access. It's a lot cheaper than all the paper that they have to print up, and it's another way of basically disseminating that information. I did want to caution us, because we still need to maintain all the old modes of operation. Mr. Wax, you might not be aware of this, but my wife, the other day, watched her first city council meeting, and it was because we were at a friend's house who had cable. And the reality is, at our house, we have a disc. We don't have cable. So no matter what you do, we'll always have these gaps, and that's why the old system of making sure there's one at a library makes a difference also. But I could also see us having to develop an EIR library, based on the size of projects and the way things are happening, for people to be able to have access to it. So again, I just wanted to rise to commend the Department, because I think it's an excellent idea, that is being implemented. It's not something that's just in the idea mode, and again, I think it's in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think they did a good job, but I just wonder why we want to not act on the report today and request the information back, but I think we ought to approve this report today, and then make the request they come back with the information that you requested, Joel, because obviously, this gets it started immediately. And I don't, I... And I don't, I prefer not to delay on this. I think that the additional items can be added to this from the other departments, and all this is going to be through the, through the information agency that we have is basically going to be all coordinated through there. So I would suggest that we approve this, but we ask for them to come back with the additional information that you requested in 30 days or whatever. So if you'll accept that as a substitute, I would--
This had just said, "Note and file the planning department report," and so--
Well, but--
--and ask them to come back to us. So we're just really adding on. You're absolutely, we accept this, and in fact, I want to commend them for having done what they've done.
Certainly.
And just add on in accordance with Ms. Misakowski's motion--
Because this is going to be a step that's going to be a major information item to the public. And anybody, whether they're in school, or whether they're in their home, or whether they're a member of our community councils, or just somebody that's interested because there's something going in next door to them, can pick up the information right on their computer on the Internet. And I think it's a major, major step forward in making information available to the public. So I commend Natalie and Emily in the department, and I think that this is a major, major step for the city.
Thank you.
Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard? If not, Mr. Wax has requested a 30-day report back rather than receiving filing.
We're going to act on the, accept the report--
Correct.
--before us, and we just supplement it with the additional request--
Correct.
--to come back in 30 days, along with Ms. Misakowski's request to have all the various departments who are affected be a part of this.
Okay. Any other council member that wishes to speak? If not, we will open the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you. Next.
Item 37 called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, item number 37.
Yes, Mr. President. Request that we hold it on the desk until after closed session, bringing in an amendment. I've spoken with the committee chair. If you please.
Okay. We'll hold this on the desk until after closed session. Next, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
We do have one speaker for public comment. Candido Morris. Candido, before you begin, as a courtesy, we have three individuals that filled out cards for item number 20. Ralph Horowitz, Larry Warshell, and Rosalyn Shergan. That item has been continued, I believe, Madam Clerk, one week. And so if you would like to come back next week, same time, same place, this item will be before us on item 20. So that's been continued. I don't want you to be sitting around. Candido, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just gave the officer a little flyer that I'd like to make sure all the council people receive. Have those been passed out? Who's passing them out? Okay. Yesterday, when I was leaving jury duty, I turned on my radio, and I heard that there was a motion placed before this council by Councilwoman Chick to add $3 million to Operation Clean Sweep. I've never been so upset in my entire life. If you look at the little drawing that I've given you, we have a lot of young kids that are being drawn into the gangs and to the tag crews. What are we doing to stop that? The taggers are still going to continue tagging. Operation Clean Sweep will have another $3 million, and what is that going to do? We can chase them all day long, and it's not going to solve any of the problems we have. Yes, we might clean it up a little quicker, but you know what? They're even faster than we are. After 16 years of cleaning up graffiti, on Saturday, we confronted one on Balboa and Dementure. He stood there and looked at us and flipped us off. He dared us to come across the street to get him. We waited for the police department. It took 45 minutes for the police department to show up. He crossed the street. He pulled something out of the apartment, crossed the street to confront us, and fortunately, the police officer showed up. We chased him, and he disappeared. Four officers, myself, chased him, and we could not catch him. So at the bottom, are you taking a look at this? On the bottom, you have the tagger being chased by Operation Clean Sweep. You have the taxpayer being prodded by the city council to pour more money in to clean up graffiti. When are we really going to solve the issue of graffiti? In 10 years, are we going to give $20 million to clean up graffiti? Let's come up with some real solutions this time.
Thank you, Candido. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to request on behalf of--
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry.
--Councilmember Nate Holden, we need to amend item 21, and so the amendment's just currently being, the motion is being circulated. So I'd like to request that we could reconsider that item at this time, and then hold it on the desk until the amending motion is circulated.
Is there any objection to reconsidering item number 21 at this time? Seeing no objection, item 21 is again before us, and we are going to hold it on the desk until the amending motion can be circulated.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next item, Madam Clerk.
You have, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
You have motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Chick requested excuse from today's meeting. Personal business, I need a motion.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, we do have some items for closed session at this time, so persons in the audience that are not involved with the closed session items, if you could please excuse yourselves, sergeants, would you please help us clear the council chambers and prepare Closed session first, and then we have two items that remain on the desk that we need to dispense with also. So, Madam Clerk?
Item number 42B, case of Dickinson versus City et al., and it's a settlement in the amount of $135,000.
That was the last one? Yes. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on that item and tabulate the vote?
Seven ayes, three nays.
That item is not approved.
Will continue to Friday?
Continued, well, why don't we continue till Tuesday?
Okay.
That'll be continued until Tuesday. Next.
Item number 21, Mr. President, is still on the desk. That was an item that was reconsidered, and there's an amending motion, or correcting motion.
The amending motion, as I see it, would then put the whole ordinance over as a first consideration for next week.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, without objection, that'll be the order on that item. Next.
Item number 37, Mr. President, is on the desk. I believe there's an amending motion on that one.
Mr. Padilla, item 37.
Mr. President and Councilmember Hernandez request continued until Friday. It's just a small motion, hasn't been finalized yet. It's obviously not on the desk yet. It's not a big change to the item before us, but I wanted to make sure it's incorporated timely.
Is there any objection to continuing item number 37 until Friday?
Members of the council, I just want for the record to state that this was approved by committee back in November, December, early December. Mr. Pacheco and I, in reviewing an RFP in October, had approved them. And so the bottom line is, it was pulled because the report didn't indicate, the report indicated all four approved in terms of the Business Assistance Centers, but didn't basically define this one as one of the four. We then basically have been continuing this item at the request of Mr. Padilla, and I know that he has some small changes to make, and I don't have a problem with those changes. But meanwhile, the agency is operating without basically being reimbursed. And so the agency, from the perspective of the RFP, scored high, and it was the one selected, and as long as Mr. Padilla's moves are not trying to prohibit that from happening, I don't have a problem with that extension.
Mr. Padilla?
Mr. President, Mr. Hernandez, no. And I promise, on Friday, we'll move this forward. I'm not interested in changing the recommendation, or it's already been approved by committee, but let me just give you a glimpse as to what I'm trying to do. VEDC has been operating in the San Fernando Valley for many years. In addition to that, there was an article in the, I believe it was the Daily News, just yesterday, outlining a new building to bring together not only VEDC, but the Economic Alliance, potentially United Chambers of Commerce, like other Valley business organizations. At the same time, there's state funding from legislation and last year's budget coming down to establish small business development centers. One of the areas located on a statewide level that had a great need was the East San Fernando Valley. So there's all these things going on at one, and I think it's prudent on our part, and I want CDD to take the lead, just to tell us how this all fits together, because everybody's trying to do the same thing. There's a number of sources, of resources being tapped here, and I think we just need to have that comprehensive plan in place. So my only addition is a request to report back from CDD in that context, and it's just a matter of finalizing the motion and filing with the clerk, and it's not going to be done in the next two minutes.
Yeah, no, and I commend--
Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, I commend you for that work, and I don't have a problem with that. What I'm trying to explain is, we already have a process that we've completed, and I'm just trying to complete that process. I think this process has a lot of merit and a tremendous amount of value. Whether we had to hold what we're doing in order to include that process is more my question mark. So again, hopefully Friday, we'll just all be able to pass it through, and that won't be a problem. So right now, I just got a missing link to a overall network that we've already approved, and I'm just trying to get that done.
Okay. So if there's no objection, we will continue--
No objection, no.
Okay, there, we will continue this item until Friday. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Very good. Do we have, do we have any adjourning motions? Okay, I do have one, so if the council in the audience could please rise. Adjourning motions? Okay. I would like to ask the council adjourn in memory of Angelie El-Sayad, the mother of the honorary mayor of Wilmington, Dr. Nabil El-Sayad, who was born in Cairo, Egypt, on the 1st of June, 1915, and passed away on January 15 of this year. Seeing no others, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Seeing no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. Have a good day.